I take call to order the September meeting of the Morrisville Planning and zoning Board. If you will please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. For the agenda, we are going to remove the item for the what was potential meeting on the nineteenth or the twenty-fifth, and appreciate everyone's willingness to come, but it looks like that's not going to be needed at this time. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, the agenda and removing that item?
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
On my favor? Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Anyone have any issues or questions about the minutes from the last meeting in May way back then?
No.
If nothing, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
On my favor? Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And just a little bit of housekeeping, we have had some changes in the board and we have a new member, Narke, Narate, and also she is an alternate, Sanjay Archaya will be a returning member. However, he could not be here tonight for his first meeting back, but he will be joining us in the future as a full member. So I guess with that, we can move on to the Economic Development Strategy Overview.
Good evening Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My name is Tiffany McNeil. I am the Town's Economic Development Director. Tonight, my goal is to provide an overview of the town's economic development strategy and our goals, and also to just share some information about why important land use decisions help contribute to our long-term economic development goals. Bear with me for a second while I get the clicker. That is not clicking, hold on one second. There we go. So it's important to know that our work in economic development here at the town is based on past successes, and that's our foundation, and also we want to embrace our new opportunities. I started in the role of Economic Development Director in October of last year. So next year will be one year that I've been with the town, and it's been an amazing opportunity. But I have to also give credit and thanks to our Chamber of Commerce, as well as Wake County Economic Development, and Kathleen Henry with KH Consulting for the hard work in economic development that they all contributed to prior to me coming to the town, as well as town leadership and our town council for making the investment into our Economic Development Department, which now consists of myself and Amelia Hosin, which is our Small Business Specialist. Many of you may have seen her around the community, leading small business workshops. And so we are really excited to have our Economic Development Department up and running. And so I want to also just share with you, many of you may already know this, but you know, what is economic development? I won't read that long definition that comes from the International Economic Development Council, but at the core of economic development, it's about promoting and uplifting the economic vitality in a community so that we are creating jobs and retaining jobs that allow our residents to provide for their families and to have a high quality of life. It's about that wealth creation where we're increasing the flow of income into our community. And it's also about tax-based enhancement, where we're generating a stable tax base from new businesses' investment as well. And so when we think about tax-based enhancement, it's creating that diverse tax base so that we have sustainability in our community. And our mission and vision here, when we think about economic development with the town of Morrisville, just very high level, our mission is, the goal is to drive sustainable economic growth by supporting our small businesses, attracting new businesses, and strengthening our existing ones. And our vision is to continue building on Morrisville's success by creating a thriving and innovative community where diverse industries can grow and thrive. And many of us know that Morrisville's a great place, but you know, when I'm out in the community and sharing about our business climate, I'm really excited to be able to brag on our AAA bond rating, our supportive local government, the support we get from our town council and our leaders, our competitive tax rates and incentives, and our permitting processes. Thanks to Michelle and the Planning Department for providing that support on several economic development projects, as well as the Planning and Zoning Board, and then our diverse industry base. And I'll talk a little bit about our diverse industry base shortly here. And just kind of highlighting our strong growth in some of our very targeted industries, and again, our high quality of life. At Morrisville, I want to take some time here just to focus on our history of progress and the innovation in Morrisville, and what I see and what many of us, many see is our competitive advantage. And this slide here talks a little bit about that. Since 2019, we've had thirty companies announce, and many of these companies are with economic development. So they announce through support from our economic development organizations that support us, as well as the chamber, and working directly with our town staff and town council. So since 2019, there's been thirty company announcements and twenty-four hundred, over twenty-four hundred jobs announced, which equals about three hundred and thirteen point nine million dollars of capital investment. That's a significant amount of investment, and so my job is to increase that. That's why I'm here every day, working to recruit businesses to our community. And also, our investment in our town center, and I understand we'll be breaking ground shortly. And so that's the investment that we're making into the community so that we can attract business and attract talent. And also, just to talk a little bit about the new developments we've seen. In this image here in the slides, you'll see Spark, Pathway redevelopment that you've seen at Southport, as well as what is known as Stitch Now, which was formerly the old airport mall. And again, Morrisville does have a proven track record for its success. And so just to talk a little bit about our global leaders that continue to choose Morrisville. And you see here on this slide that representation, Fujifilm, PPD, Teleflex. Those are some of the global leaders, Schneider Electric, that continue to choose Morrisville and grow here. Most recently, in July, we had the first anchor announced at Spark, which is Coriolis Pharma. This is a German-based company that announced that they would be investing ten million dollars into Morrisville and creating fifty jobs. And again, Liquidia, which is, they actually manufacture and produce treatments for pulmonary hypertension. So a very rare disease, but life-saving treatments happening right here, taking place, being developed in the town of Morrisville, as well as the announcement that was made by Forge Nano just a couple of years ago. And I can talk a little bit about that later, but these companies represent our targeted industries. Clean energy, advanced manufacturing, business and financial services, technology. They're among the companies that make up Morrisville today. So I talked a little bit about this progress that we've made in the town of Morrisville, our success, our vision, our commitment to economic development. I want to take some time now to focus a little more on our economic development strategy and what our pillars are and our core focus from an economic development strategy standpoint. We focus on business recruitment, so that's business attraction of new businesses, business retention and expansion. And most people, a lot of people know that about sixty percent of the businesses that you, the growth that you typically have, typically comes from existing industry. So existing industry is important. It's one thing to recruit a business, but you have to help that business be able to sustain and grow in the community. And then commercial and industrial real estate. And we talked about the new development and redevelopment of some of our prime real estate that we have here. So this involves working with our existing developers and attracting new developers to our community so that we're able to compete with those economic development projects that we see come in, whether this is, whether we're working with a site consultant or a new company that's interested in our community. And then that industry cluster cultivation. And so just to step back, again, we focus on advanced manufacturing, business and financial services, life sciences, clean tech and technology. And so we think about growing those industry clusters. How do we do that? We do that through partnership and collaboration. I'll use life sciences as an example. We have a very close relationship with our North Carolina Biotech Center. And so there, we're learning, what is it about our community that can make us attractive for life sciences companies? What is it that we can provide from a talent perspective? Do we have the commercial and real estate that is needed? And how can we also communicate with our surrounding universities, as well as our schools, even down to elementary and middle and high schools, about the curriculum that is needed to be able to provide the talent for these particular companies? Because the talent pipeline development starts early on. A lot of people think about the individuals that graduate from college, but some of these companies that are coming into our community, they're looking for people that might be straight out of high school or that are going to a community colleges. So developing that type, that pipeline early on is really important. And I can say, as someone that has very young kids, anytime you can get a business in front of them and help expose them to different opportunities and types of careers, it's really good to start young. And that kind of helps with our workforce development. And then regional engagement. This goes along with just building those partnerships and collaborations, and making sure our community is visible. Small business support, we hired Amelia Hosin in March, who focuses primarily on small businesses and entrepreneurial growth. Excited to say that we have a small business newsletter that I hope you all can join if you don't already have it. I give that information to Michelle so that you can be on the list and just share it with community members. We have so many workshops and events that are coming up. And that innovation ecosystem continue to connect with think tanks and stay involved from an innovative perspective. And our marketing strategy. I am a talker, so I like, I like to talk about our community. I like to share all the wonderful things about our community. And so that's embedded in our marketing strategy. How do we tell our story? In order to tell the story, you have to be at the table. And no one can really tell the story of your community better than you, better than us that we work in the community. We thrive in the community every day. And so what we have done, we've joined several marketing cooperatives, such as the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina's Marketing Cooperative. And we participate in trade shows and events and going on visits with site consultants to be at the table, to tell our story, to share information about the town of Morrisville, why we are strategic, how we're strategically located within the Research Triangle region. We're only four minutes from Raleigh-Durham. We are located near three tier-one universities. And so it's my job to continue to tell that story to, because sometimes what we think, well, everyone knows where Morrisville is. That's not, that's not so. I've been in rooms where people did know the difference in North Carolina and South Carolina, and then I have to remind them constantly, and no, we're not Morrisville near Charlotte. We are Morrisville near RDU. And so I always say, if you've been to RDU- And so I always say, if you've been to RDU, you've been to Morrisville. And so again, telling our story, telling it in a strategic and creative way. Um, we'll be working on an economic development marketing video, um, to hopefully tell some success, success stories and share that with the world. And so that's just an example of what will come out of our marketing, um, strategy. And again, quality of life. And that, that's not just our department, the work that we do, but that's just department that the town does, that's department that, that's, um, excuse me, that's the work that the planning and zoning board does, and many other committees that operate within the town. And so that is some of a very quick overview of the strategy. But again, it's about collaboration and partnership. So none of that can be done without partner engagement. And so from a day-to-day basis, like, I'm not working economic development projects alone. That's done with the Chamber, Wake Tech Community College, Biotech Center, NC State University, our town council, planning department, inspections, that just names a few people that could potentially touch an economic development project on a day-to-day basis. And I, and I will highlight our Wake County Economic Development, um, group, because when I speak of economic development projects, a lot of those projects come in directly through them from the state. They are confidential. And so we're, we're working confidentially in the background, gathering information for these companies that are looking to locate or expand in our community. And we have very quick timelines. And so we are either answering questions about permitting, about utilities, about, um, infrastructure, roads. And so we're working very closely with several different partners, just to be able to provide that information so we can make the shortlist. So we've already, we've already told them all the great things about us, and then we, once we're selected on that shortlist, that's where the work continues. And so it takes a lot of work into, um, bringing this to fruition. And so, um, I, I just want to say thank you to planning and, and the planning and zoning board, because that land use decision to determine initially what's the highest and best use of the land that we have available, that's a very critical component to economic development that sometimes we don't, we don't talk about often. And so, um, I just wanted to point that out. And I, I wanted to do a very quick overview, that was quicker than I thought, I, I kind of rushed through that. But if there are any questions that anyone has for me, I, I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Do we have any questions, Esther?
Good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no questions, but thank you for the presentation.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. And we can move on to five B. Uh, and also the housekeeping, Elliot, we have Sushma as the voting member tonight as alternate, just for your records or whatever.
Right, thank you.
As Tiffany sneaks out, I just want to say thank you to her for coming in tonight and spending a little time with you. Um, it's been great to see what you can accomplish when you dedicate resources to economic development, and she has just been a great addition to this team over the last year. So thank you, Tiffany.
Okay. Um, so next on the agenda, we have a couple, um, trainings, uh, planned for the Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, we've purchased, uh, some School of Government modules. If you've been on the board, um, for a while, some of these may look a little familiar to you. Um, this is something that the School of Government historically published, and then took down, um, a couple of years ago after the one sixty D, um, update, which was the major rewrite of general statute land use regulations. Uh, but those modules have now been updated, um, to bring them up to date with current law, republished. Um, so as we're moving forward, if we have some lighter agendas, or potentially in lieu of canceling a meeting, um, you may see some more of these, um, in the future. Uh, but for tonight, we're going to do two of them that are really focused, um, on legislative decisions and conditional rezonings, um, because that is one of the, the major, um, items that this board is responsible for. So, um, if there aren't any questions, I'm just going to pull the first one up. The first one, um, runs about thirty minutes, and then the second one's going to run about twenty.
So suppose there is a proposal for a rezoning on the edge of town. How's that going to go? What's that process going to be? What notice do we have to provide? What kind of hearings are we going to hold in order to make that decision? That's what we're going to talk about in this session, the legal procedures for a rezoning or for other legislative development decisions. I'm Adam Lovelady with the UNC School of Government. Let's jump in and talk about the legal procedures for rezonings. For this session, we're going to talk about these topics. First, just setting up the legal framework for the decision-making and the roles of a public board. Talk about the application itself and the staff review, the role of that staff review. Talk a bit about the planning board review and comment that's required by statute, and then finally, the governing board decision, the legal procedures that go with that. Note that in another session, we will talk about the considerations, the things that we, uh, the substantive considerations that we'll take into account when we're making these legislative decisions. This session is specifically focused on the procedures. Now, thinking about that legal framework, I want to emphasize and kind of set up how this is operating and how your local government might fit in. One thing that has to be noted is, in North Carolina, local governments can do what the General Assembly has said they can do. The North Carolina General Assembly has delegated a lot of different responsibilities to counties and to municipalities in the state, but there are certain rules and requirements for that delegated authority. When we talk about planning and zoning, the rules and requirements are in chapter one sixty D of the general statutes. Chapter one sixty D is the statutory chapter that outlines the authority, the roles and responsibilities for planning, zoning, subdivision, minimum housing, building code enforcement, and a whole range of development regulations. When we're talking about the procedures, when we're considering, can a local government do this or that with regard to development regulations, commonly, the question is, well, what does chapter one sixty D say? In general, especially when it comes to the procedures, chapter one sixty D sets a framework, and local governments have to follow that framework. But there's room within that framework for organizing things slightly differently, for running the process a little bit differently. And so as I'm talking about these general requirements, I'm talking about the general framework, your community may approach things slightly differently, as long as it's within that legal framework. Now, if I'm saying something and it seems wildly out of, uh, out of kilter with the way that your community is processing a legislative decision, such as a rezoning, then either you might need to update your processes to align with state law, or your local government may have special rules, may have local legislation or special charter provisions that allow for your local government to do things in a particular way. Some of the general rules are going to apply no matter what, and one of those general rules is with regard to open meetings. Important to recognize what counts as an open meeting, because if it's an open meeting, if it's an official meeting, then we got to provide notice in advance, and we're going to need minutes of the meeting, and we've got to invite the public to show up. So if something is an official meeting, then we have to follow all the rules and procedures. And here's the deal, the definition of official meeting is broader than you might think. And so a conversation at the grocery store or at the bar on Friday night could actually turn into an official meeting if we're not careful. So let's dig in to figure out what counts as an official meeting. Here is the statutory definition, so let's get familiar with this. An official meeting is a meeting, assembly, or gathering together at any time or place, or the simultaneous communication by conference telephone or other electronic means of a majority of the members of a public body for the purpose of conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon, or otherwise transacting the public business within the jurisdiction, real or apparent, of the public body. So let's break that apart. If a majority of your board is gathered together electronically or in person to do something related to your public work, deliberate, vote, transact the public business, that's an official meeting. It would have to have notice, the public would have to be invited, the, uh, there's got to be minutes, all the, all the requirements kick in. So you happen to be at a restaurant on Friday night, you bump into other members of your board. Planning board is a public body, the governing board is a public body. If you've got a majority of your board there together, you start chatting about that agenda item for next Tuesday's meeting, deciding, how do we feel about this proposal? Do we like this rezoning or not? We've now got a majority of the board gathered in person, transacting the public business. Can't do it. Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean you have to stay home all the time. It doesn't mean that you can't go to dinner on Friday night. You can go to dinner, you can bump into your fellow board members. You need to not then start talking about the meeting for next week. Note here that it is not limited to meeting in person, it would also apply for conference telephone or other electronic means. So if we've got simultaneous communication among a majority of the board, we're deliberating about a case, we're talking about an agenda item for next week, we've just now tripped over into official meeting land. We need to avoid that. Another general rule that's going to apply, another big piece of this legal framework, is with regard to public records. This is another one that's got a broad expansive definition and has legal implications for us as public officials. If we've got a public record and it is requested, we have to disclose and turn over that public record. So we need to be mindful about how we're creating public records, where we're creating public records, and what requirements that might then trigger. Another long and expansive definition here, public records are all documents, papers, letters, maps, books, photographs, films, sound recordings, magnetic, or other tapes, electronic data processing records, artifacts, or other documentary material, regardless of physical form or characteristics, made or received in connection with the transaction of public business. That's a lot of stuff. And the language is somewhat old when we see film, sound recordings, and magnetic, or other tapes, but we've got that catch-all, other documentary material. That email that you receive from an upset constituent about that rezoning case that's coming up. That text message that you sent to your buddy about your feelings about this upcoming zoning case, or you sent to a fellow board member. Those are now records in connection with the transaction of public business. Those could be disclosed if they are requested by the local paper, by some concerned citizens, or otherwise. It does not matter if it's a physical piece of paper, or it's an electronic record, it's still a record. Doesn't matter if it's on your personal email or on your government email, still a public record if it's concerning the public business. And so it's not a, um, it doesn't shield from disclosure if it's on your personal computer, your personal device, or your personal email account. Now, both of these things can feel a little squishy, that my conversation at the restaurant on Friday night might trip into some public meeting that we now need to have, uh, have notice for. It can feel a little odd that my personal email might be subject to disclosure and put on the front page of the paper. And from the personal perspective, that is true, but I'd encourage our public officials to step out of their current public official status and step into their status as the public, as citizen. These rules are in place to ensure that we as public get to see the decision-making process. These rules are in place so that we as public have access to our public records to make sure that decisions are made for the right reasons, that deliberation is robust and in the open, that there's not backroom deals or kind of underlying reasons for decision-making. We as public put these requirements for public records and open meetings, we put these into place so that we as public are there to view the decision-making, that we have access to our public records. And so yes, for the public official, it can feel a little bit strange that personal email might have to be disclosed. It can feel strange that your conversations, if we're not careful, could trip over into an official meeting. But for us as community, for us as public, these are important protections for open government, government, and for getting some daylight into this decision-making processes. Couple of things to note and keep in mind, some communities have, uh, give their public officials, uh, public email account in order to, so that the, the communications can be managed that way through that public email account, rather than through personal email accounts. That's then easier to maintain and manage those record retainment requirements, and it allows for some separation between the personal and the official work. Also worth noting that the public records requirement does not mean that you have to create a public record. So a conversation between me and one other person is not creating a record, it's just a conversation. And if there's a request for the details of that conversation, that does not mean I have to come up with a record, there's not a record in existence of that. These are important rules for open government and rules we need to be aware of as we are acting as public officials. Another important legal framework consideration for planning board members, as well as governing board members, are the requirements and limitations with regard to conflicts of interest for legislative zoning matters. Members of appointed boards or governing boards shall not vote where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. So if it is your property that's getting rezoned, you as planning board member cannot participate in that decision-making. If it is your business who's seeking the text amendment or seeking the rezoning, then you as city council member can't be part of the decision-making for that. Now, note on the financial piece, it's direct, substantial, and readily identifiable. And so if there's a scenario where perhaps a public official, the board member owns a minuscule share of, uh, a, a stock through their retirement account, and now that company is seeking a rezoning, that's not necessarily going to rise to the level of being a conflict of interest, but if there is direct, substantial, and readily identifiable, uh, financial impact, that could trigger this financial conflict of interest. Important point here is that the conflict of interest standard is broader than just financial relationship and financial interest. With chapter one sixty D, there's an expansion of the conflict of interest standard to also apply to close relationships. An appointed board member or a governing board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property is subject to a rezoning petition, or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the board member has a close familial, business, or other associational relationship. So if a planning board member, sitting on the planning board, and it's their child who's seeking the rezoning, that planning board member has a close familial relationship with the applicant, that planning board member would need to recuse themselves. with the applicant, that planning board member would need to recuse themselves. If a governing board member is a business partner with the person seeking the rezoning, that's a close business relationship, that governing board member would need to recuse him or herself. Now, there can be situations where it's a close call, there can be questions about conflicts of interest. It's best to address those ahead of time, for board members to identify a potential conflict and have a discussion with the local government attorney in advance to evaluate whether this rises to the level of a conflict, or perhaps it's just an apparent conflict. Even apparent conflicts can be identified in the hearing, so that everyone knows that there's that potential. If there is a complaint, if there is a challenge to say, a particular board member should not participate, if there's an objection to their participation, then the remaining members of the board vote as to whether that member should participate, or that member should be recused. That gives us some of the legal framework with regard to open meetings, public records, conflicts of interest. Now let's talk about the details of the process for a legislative development decision such as a rezoning. When it comes to a rezoning, there's various parties who could request a rezoning. Certainly the local government can initiate a rezoning, the local government could redo the whole zoning map if it wants to, and it's got pretty broad discretion to do that. It'd have to follow the right processes, but it can make that request on its own. The governing board may instruct the planning department to bring forth an updated zoning Separate from the local government driving these decisions, there is certainly the option for a property owner to petition for a rezoning. This is the most common way that these processes move forward, where a particular owner or someone with an ownership interest in a property fills out the application to seek a rezoning. And certainly there are rights to do this, to request a change to the rules, to petition our government to make change and give redress, and so certainly there's the option for the property owner to do that. They don't have a right to the rezoning, it remains in the discretion of the local government to decide whether to rezone or not, but there's an option for the property owner or someone with an ownership interest to request, to petition that rezoning. When it comes to rezonings, we have to be particular about the extent to which third parties may request that. And here's the way this plays out. I as property owner could request for my property to be upzoned, to have zoning with more development rights and more density. I as property owner could request for my property to be downzoned. Maybe I think this shouldn't be commercial, let's take it back to agricultural. My neighbor could not request to downzone my property. Under North Carolina state law, there are no third-party downzonings. And so if my neighbor is trying to reduce my property rights, is trying to take my property from commercial to agricultural, so there would be fewer uses allowed and less density, that would go against state law. They couldn't have that third-party downzoning. As we think about the internal staff process and the planning department review of an application for rezoning or text amendment, there could be several steps in the process. Depending on the size of the project or proposal, commonly there will be some pre-application discussions or meetings, a chance for the applicant to sit down with planning staff and talk through the project and get some input and guidance on how that project might best move forward. This is not required necessarily, but it is an option that's available for smoothing the process as it moves forward. But there will need to be a formal application for the rezoning or for the other legislative change. In the best circumstances, we as local, as the community, we as local government are going to have a really good application form that will seek all the information we need in order to make this decision. Certainly there's still going to be other input, there's still going to be some back and forth, but we want a good form, application, that's going to solicit all the information that we will need. Sometimes that application and analysis will include things like a transportation impact study, or other technical analysis that may be necessary for evaluating this rezoning. Other times it may be more simplified and more straightforward. When it comes to applications, we can charge a reasonable application fee, a permit fee, but that fee is not a revenue generation scheme. That application fee is not to pay for other things elsewhere in the local government. Application fees need to be reasonably related to the cost of processing this application, the copies we need to make, the staff time it's going to require, the overhead expenses of the office and of the boards, the board time that will be required for this. But, we're not going to take, that fee cannot then be transitioned over for unrelated activities. Those fees need to stay with the department and pay for the processes and work of the department. Once the application is in, staff is going to perform technical analysis and provide some staff review. This allows for some expert review of how this project would play out, how it aligns with the comprehensive plans and other applicable plans, and local governments can tailor what that staff review is going to incorporate, how it's going to move forward. After that application and staff review stage, there's a requirement for the planning board to give review and comment on a proposed legislative change such as a rezoning. Chapter 160D, Section 604 outlines these requirements, that all proposed amendments to the zoning regulation or zoning map shall be submitted to the planning board for review and comment. And the planning board is going to review and comment on whether the proposed action is consistent with any comprehensive plan, and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The planning board gives written recommendation to the governing board that addresses plan consistency and other matters as deemed appropriate by the planning board. So before this rezoning can go to the governing board, it's got to go to the planning board. The planning board is going to give recommendation focused on plan consistency, but then other matters that the planning board deems necessary and appropriate for the decision-making for this rezoning or other zoning amendment. With regard to the process here, the planning board is going to get at least 30 days from the referral to the planning board. After that 30 days has up, if the planning board has not provided written recommendation, then the governing board can move forward even without that recommendation. Now I want to be clear about this procedural step. The governing board, the town council or the county commission, can give the planning board longer, there's not a requirement that the governing board take it up after 30 days. The governing board can give more time to the planning board, but the planning board can't just sit on an application and kind of have a veto and prevent it from going ahead to the governing board. After that 30 days has elapsed, the governing board can take it up even without that recommendation from the board, from the planning board. When the planning board is discussing and deliberating and providing their recommendation, they're holding a public meeting, an official meeting, and it has to be properly noticed. It might be handled as a legislative hearing, but that's not required by state law. Many communities do treat the planning board level similar to the governing board level, where there's going to be notice ahead of time, and then invite the public to come and give input on this decision. There's the option to have a legislative hearing, open to all and with input from all, but at the planning board level, that's not required. Note, that legislative decision, that legislative hearing is required for the governing board, we'll get to that in just a moment. So let's jump then to that governing board decision and the procedures that go with it. First off, once we get to the governing board decision, there's going to be required notice. State law requires that for any legislative hearing, so for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, for rezoning, for conditional zoning, that notice has to be published in the newspaper two times. One of those legal ads is going to be in that window of time that's 10, 25 days before the hearing. The other legal ad has to be in a separate calendar week. For every legislative hearing, for every legislative decision, development decision, we've got to have this newspaper notice. If it's a rezoning, if we're amending the zoning map, then there's also got to be some additional notice, a sign posted on the site, you can see an example here from Charlotte, with a sign that's going to let passersby know that there's an upcoming hearing related to this property, and let passersby know where they can get additional information. Also, to go along with the sign that's posted, there's got to be mailed notice to the affected parties, the property owner and the applicant, as well as the owners of adjoining and abutting property. Now, that's going to be mailed notice to those immediate neighbors or owners of the immediate neighboring properties. That's the minimum. Some local governments decide, well, we don't want to just give the minimum notice, we're going to mail notice to everyone within 500 feet, or everyone within 5,000, excuse me, 1,000 feet. It's an option for the local government to go beyond and provide additional notice by mail, but for a rezoning, we have to have the sign posted and mailed notice to adjoining property owners. In some cases, for a really big rezoning, that might mean mailing to a lot of property owners. In those cases where there's a large-scale rezoning, there is an option to do a half-page newspaper ad in place of the mailed notice, which can be cheaper and easier than providing mailed notice to hundreds of property owners. Next up, the hearing itself. This is at the governing board, so town council or the county commission, these are the legislators who are making this decision. They're going to hold a legislative hearing. There can be some reasonable rules put into place for this legislative hearing, but we're not going to follow the same formality that we would follow for a quasi-judicial decision such as a variance or a special use permit. For these legislative hearings, we might have some reasonable rules like setting time limits on speakers and allowing each person three minutes. We might put into place a requirement for some signup sheets, so that we can kind of keep the, keep things moving and keep things in order. We might set rules about overall time limits to have some amount of time for folks in favor of the rezoning, and some amount of time for folks opposing the rezoning. Certainly we're going to need to maintain fundamental fairness and ensure that the public is able to engage in this process, but we don't have to follow those extra technical legal procedures of a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing the way that we would if this was another type of decision. If it's getting late, and the hearing is dragging on, we might decide we want to continue this hearing. If we had announced at this particular meeting, we're going to continue this legislative hearing to our regularly scheduled meeting next month, then we don't have to do additional notice. We've provided the notice right here in the hearing, so interested parties are aware and know when to show up to engage in the next step. But, if it's getting late, and we say, you know what, let's just table this, we'll come back to it. We don't specify a date and time for that, for bringing it back up, then we're going to have to provide additional notice in advance of that additional legislative hearing. There are some required statements that the governing board is going to have to adopt as they are adopting a rezoning or a text amendment. Whether they're approving or denying, they'll need to also adopt these statements. One of the statements that's required is a statement of plan consistency. This is a procedural requirement for the board to consider, is this rezoning consistent with our applicable plans? Or, is this text amendment, this change to the zoning ordinance, is it consistent with our applicable plans? Now, this statement does need to be unique to this project, it needs to reflect the details of this project, but it does not have to be a multi-page extended discussion of all the ways it's consistent or inconsistent. It can be a simple, straightforward statement, but it needs to be unique to this project and dig into how and why is this project consistent with our plans or not. This statement of plan consistency, it's required for all zoning decisions, whether it's getting approved or denied, and it's for rezonings and text amendments. Now, important to note, this can be one motion to approve the rezoning and the consistency statement, that's perfectly fine, but there does need to be formal action to adopt the consistency statement. These statements can be drafted in advance, and so staff can help draft a potential consistency statement that's included as part of the packet. There could even be an option A and option B, where one is for, yes, it's consistent, the other is for, no, it's not consistent. Either way is fine. Also, the governing board can craft its own statement as it's deliberating and coming up with it, but there does need to be a statement, and there needs to be formal adoption of it. Now, important to note that this does not mean that the plan has to be consistent. This is a procedural requirement, not a substantive requirement. It is perfectly fine for the governing board to say, this is not consistent with our plans, and we're going to do it anyway. In North Carolina, comprehensive plans and land use plans are not binding. We can make policy decisions that go against the plan, but we are, we do have to at least consider that plan and state whether this is going to be consistent or not. In some cases, there's going to be a decision of inconsistency. If that's on a rezoning case, then the zoning amendment has the effect of also amending any future land use map in the approved plan. So, if the governing board says, this is not consistent with the map, but we're going to do it anyway, then that rezoning action effectively and by law changes that future land use map to align with this rezoning, essentially saying, the governing board has now stated what its policy preference is, let's have that reflected in the future land use map. So we've got to adopt a statement of plan consistency. If the decision is a rezoning, we also have to adopt, the governing board has to adopt, a statement of reasonableness. The statement of reasonableness is protection against a claim of spot zoning. In North Carolina, spot zoning is legal if it's reasonable, and so this statement of reasonableness is providing the rationale for why this rezoning is not spot zoning. The factors that are included in the statute are the factors that our courts look at when they're considering spot zoning. Things like the characteristics of this particular site and the surrounding sites, balancing the benefits and detriments of the property owner and the neighbors, the relationship between what's currently there or could be there and what's proposed, and the broader public interest, and the ways in which this might be a necessary action. These statements of reasonableness, the governing board needs to adopt these for any rezoning or zoning map amendment. Worth noting here that you can have one statement, that is a statement of plan consistency and reasonableness, that's totally fine, but there does need to be a formal statement for the decision that needs to be formally adopted by the governing board with their So then we come down to the vote. It used to be the case that in some circumstances, there is a requirement for a supermajority. That's no longer the case for these legislative decisions. For a rezoning or for a text amendment, a simple majority of the members who are not excused, the members who don't have a conflict of interest, is all that's needed in order to pass this, make this decision, legislative decision. There's not a need for a supermajority, even on the date of introduction. It used to be the case that on the date of introduction, even for zoning matters, there was a need for a supermajority. For zoning, that is no longer the case, there was a statutory fix for that. There also used to be an option for protest petitions, where if enough neighbors got together and signed a petition, then that could force a supermajority decision for these rezoning matters. That's no longer the law in North Carolina, that was taken off the books. So if your ordinance still has protest petition, you'll want to update that to align with current law. All right, so we have walked through the general legal framework for zoning decision-making, things like open meetings, public records, and conflicts of interest. We've talked about the application and staff review, planning board role in giving advice and making recommendation on plan consistency, and their requirements for the governing board, notice, legislative hearing, and the decision-making process for the board. With that, we have covered the steps of this state law with regard to legislative development decisions like rezonings. That's all we've got for now.
Okay, so that was webinar number one. I hope you guys found that beneficial. Second one is a little bit shorter, it gets into some of the legal considerations for rezonings, I'm going to go ahead and open that one up. I'm going to go ahead and open that one up.
When it comes to a rezoning, what should the planning board and governing board consider? And what should the planning board and governing board not consider? What are the things that absolutely should be part of the deliberation? And what are the things that are out of bounds? That's what we'll talk about in this session on legal considerations for rezoning. I'm Adam Lovett with the School of Government. Let's jump into it. It can be helpful to think about these topics with some context. So let's imagine this rezoning case. The property owner, Apartment Developers LLC, is seeking to rezone the subject property. Currently zoned for single-family, R1, and they're seeking a rezoning to multifamily. So as that's going to the planning board, as that's moving forward to the town council or the county commission, what are the things that those boards should take into account? What are the things that they should not consider in making that rezoning decision? We're going to talk about each of those. First, the legitimate zoning considerations, and second, the improper zoning considerations. The boards absolutely should consider the general land use impacts of this change. What will this mean for this particular owner or developer with regard to property values and property rights? What will it mean with regard to investment expectations and growth for our community? But also, considering the impacts for the neighbors, what will this change mean for safety and noise? What's it going to mean for impacts to the nearby properties with regard to traffic or stormwater? What does this change mean for those property values, for those investment expectations of the nearby property owners? The planning board and the governing board should think about the broader community. What will this mean for safety and convenience? What's this going to mean for traffic? To what extent does this particular use fit into this location? Is it an appropriate use for this place? And what's the character of this particular community? What are the availability of different housing types? And what are the property value implications for this development or another? And the boards should consider the impacts for the local government. What are going to be the infrastructure costs, both for installation of this capital investment, but also the long-term maintenance of these roads and pipes? What will be the service costs? And do we, as a community, have sufficient public services to provide safety for this community and this growth? What will be the tax implications and the property value implications? To what extent will this broaden and diversify our economy? To what extent will this provide for a mix of housing types? All of those considerations should be part of the decision-making, as the planning board and the town council or the county commission is considering, is this rezoning in the public interest? Those boards can also consider the broad statutory purposes of development regulations and zoning. Those include the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, a view to conserving the value of buildings, property values, and encouraging the most appropriate use of land, making sure that there's a place for everything and that it's in its appropriate place. The planning board is called to consider consistency with applicable plans. The statute requires. The governing board has to adopt a statement of plan consistency, and so there's a real and legally required expectation of considering the applicable plans. Important to remember, in North Carolina, local land use plans and comprehensive plans, they are not binding, and so it's not driving the decision, but it should be a factor in the decision. As things flow from staff to the planning board and then to the governing board, the recommendations from the prior step should be part of the factoring and considerations. And so when this rezoning winds up before the governing board, absolutely, they should take into account, what does staff recommend? What does the staff analysis indicate for this project? What was the planning board recommendation? And what's their rationale for why this should be approved or denied? The governing board absolutely should consider those recommendations. To be clear, those are just recommendations. They are advisory, and the governing board is not bound by a staff recommendation. The governing board is not bound by a planning board recommendation. Occasionally, staff and planning board and governing board will see things differently. There may be other factors at play once it gets to the political arena at the city council or the county commission. And so they're not always going to align. There may be differences of opinion. That's fine, and it's part of the process. If you find that your community is frequently or always at odds, where the planning board is pointing one way and the governing board is pointing another way, that may be an indication that there's other issues at play and other issues we need to address. Maybe our plans are out of date and don't reflect our current priorities and our current politics. Maybe we need to update our plans so that our decisions are consistent with our plans. Or maybe the planning board and staff has been tasked with the wrong questions and the wrong issues. They're not giving the right analysis for what the governing board is really looking at. And so if you find that your community is always at odds, the planning board going one way and the governing board going another way, it might be time to revisit the plan or the technical analysis that the planning board and staff is providing. This is a technical, but really important piece. If we're talking about a general rezoning, if we're talking about going from single-family residential to multifamily or commercial, if it's conventional zoning, regular old traditional zoning, from one district to the other district, once that rezoning is approved, the property owner has all the rights and obligations of that new zoning district. And so the property owner may say, "Oh yeah, I'm going to develop apartments." But once it's rezoned, they can develop whatever's allowed under that new zoning district, as long as they meet the requirements. And so as there is a proposed rezoning, the planning board and the governing board certainly should consider all the uses that are allowed in that new zoning district, not just the one that the developer is proposing, but in general, what uses would be allowed at this site if we rezoned it. Depending on what the zoning category is, there may be a whole range of different land uses that would now be allowed on that site. We need to take into account all of those options. We need to consider all the possible uses that might be on that site. So thinking about that particular scenario, thinking about the Apartment Developers LLC, as that rezoning goes through the process, the boards and the elected officials certainly should be considering the benefits and detriments to the owner, to the neighbors, and to the broader community. They should be reviewing the plans that apply to this site and how this action is consistent or not consistent with those plans. They should take into account the recommendations from the staff and from the planning board, certainly not bound by those, but using those to inform the decision-making process. If it's a conventional, regular rezoning, then governing board needs to consider all the uses that might be allowed under that new rezoning. So sure, they said apartments, but what else could be allowed here? What other things might this open up and allow? Because the market might change, the economy might change, they might choose to go a different direction. And broadly, what's in the public interest? Our decision-makers at the end of the day, our town council and our county commission, they are voted in, they are elected to make the tough calls, to think about the broad community and the needs of this broad community. What's in the broad public interest? Does it make sense to allow this rezoning or to deny this rezoning? Those all should be, indeed must be, factors in the rezoning consideration. Those are all legitimate zoning considerations. Now let's switch gears. I want to highlight some of the topics that are out of bounds, some of the ways that our statutes and our courts have limited what should be considered for a rezoning One of the things that's out of bounds is the ownership structure, whether something is owner-occupied or tenant-occupied. Whether this is going to be a tenant-occupied apartment or an owner-occupied condo, local land use regulations can't regulate that, and it shouldn't be part of the decision-making. The land use regulations can regulate multifamily development, can regulate the size of the buildings, the parking that goes with it, the landscaping that might be necessary, the density, the number of units. The local land regulations can absolutely regulate those things, but what our courts have said is, "Local land use regulations cannot regulate whether it's going to be owner-occupied or tenant-occupied." So we don't need to be concerned with whether this new development is going to be apartments or condos, whether this new subdivision is going to be owner-occupied or renter-occupied. Local land use restrictions are not authorized to regulate that kind of ownership structure. Another topic that's out of bounds is the identity of the applicant, the owner, or the future tenants of this particular site. Now, this can play out in lots of different ways. One of those ways is thinking about the developer who we see before us, developers proposing this multifamily development, and maybe this is a known developer, a trusted member of the community. We've seen them do good projects on the other side of town. We know that they can do good work here, so we want to approve the rezoning for this developer. But the rezoning is not for this one individual. The rezoning is for the property, and this current developer may be planning to sell this property tomorrow. This current property owner may have a contract already signed. They're ready to close once the rezoning happens. When we're making a rezoning decision, it's not for a particular individual, it's for the property. And so whether it's our favorite developer in town, whether it's a scoundrel that we don't trust at all, that's not part of the decision-making, because at the end of the day, this is a land use decision, not an individual permit. The rezoning will run with the land. It will go to the next property owner. Another way that this can play out is with regard to discriminatory and illegitimate considerations about who's there now or who's going to be there. Public decisions about land use cannot be based on the race or religion, the ethnicity of current occupants, future tenants. And from time to time, in public hearings, folks will talk about those people. We don't want their kind in our neighborhood. Those are inappropriate. They cannot be part of the decision-making process, and they may wind up being an invitation to the federal district courthouse if we're not careful. Chairs of boards should be ready and equipped for if those conversations pop up, to redirect, to make clear that the board cannot base its decision on those considerations. If the member of the public has good information to provide about the land use impacts of this project, certainly we want to hear that, but we can't base our decision on illegitimate things such as discriminatory basis. These cartoons are meaningless. They are arbitrary. They are nothing. And the reason they're here is because from time to time, land use decisions seem to be arbitrary. From time to time, there's just no rationale for why that decision was made. And what our courts get nervous about is, if there's no real good reason, if there's no basic justification or rationale for why this rezoning was approved or denied, they get nervous that maybe it was one of these reasons, good or bad. If there's no land use rationale for why something was approved or denied, our courts get nervous that maybe there's something underlying the decision-making that didn't come to the surface. It's not being stated why this decision was actually made, and so our courts will look carefully and may overturn a decision if there's just no good rationale. So if there's a lack of land use rationale, that can mean trouble for our decision-making. To be clear, there's 1,000 reasons to rezone a property or to not rezone a property. There's all kinds of public interest considerations, good legitimate considerations about what this will mean for the property owner, what it'll mean for the neighborhood, what it'll mean for us broadly as public. There's lots of good reasons and rationale for why a decision is made. We need to be clear and state those and not leave question as to what might be underlying or what might be covered up. Another topic that ought not be considered in the decision-making, except in limited circumstances, are promises and conditions offered up by the applicant, by the developer. If this is a regular, conventional zoning, from one zoning district to the next, once it's rezoned, that property owner has all the rights and obligations of that new zoning district. If at the hearing, the applicant said, "Oh, I've got these designs, I've got these site plans, I've got these color swatches, I promise to do everything according to all these things I'm showing you." There's no guarantee to that. Those promises, those kind of conditions that are offered up in the hearing, if it's just regular rezoning, there's no enforcement for that down the road, because that's not part of the zoning. Once it's rezoned, that owner has all the rights and obligations, what the zoning ordinance says. The big exception to this is if it's conditional zoning. If it is very clearly and explicitly conditional zoning that allows for conditions to be added and promises to be made and incorporated into the zoning and enforced as zoning. So we need to be real clear, as we're making a rezoning, is this regular, conventional rezoning, or is this conditional zoning where we can attach those conditions? This list is not so much things that are out of bounds as it is specific land uses that have some guardrails, specific land uses that have some special legal protection from federal statute or state statute or from our courts. I'm not giving this list to pretend that we're digging deeply into all the details of these, but rather just to have them build some awareness of these topics, so that next time one of these comes across your desk, your antenna goes up a little bit, and you think, "Oh, I think we need to be careful with these." Religious land uses need to be treated the same as a similarly situated secular land use. So if you allow theaters, large gathering places in downtown, you should also allow religious land uses in downtown. Just because something is religious doesn't give it a free pass. It's still subject to the regulations, but also just because it's religious, it can't have extra regulations and extra limitations in place. Signs like billboards or the little temporary signs out front, those are speech, and they have some protection as speech, but you can still have basic regulations of the characteristics of signs. So the size of signs, how brightly they're lit, where they're located, and how many signs there are, you can have those basic content-neutral regulations, but once we start regulating what's on the sign, that wanders into content regulation, courts look very closely at that and typically don't like it. Manufactured homes, adult businesses, and cell towers, those all have to be allowed somewhere within the jurisdiction, but there can be general regulations in place for each of those. They each have specific provisions, but they have to be allowed somewhere within the jurisdiction. Family care homes are residential settings where up to six individuals with disabilities live and have care in a residential setting. These have to be allowed, the same as a house would be allowed, and so they can't have extra permitting and extra requirements in place. With regard to the State Fair Housing Act... With regard to the State Fair Housing Act, there is a limit and requirement that zoning decisions cannot be made based on the fact that a project includes affordable housing. A local community cannot deny a rezoning application or permit because it includes affordable housing. Now, I know for many communities, the opposite is the concern. For many communities, they're not turning down projects because of having housing, they're looking for projects that have housing. Affordable housing winds up being a tricky legal topic in North Carolina when it comes to land use regulation. There is not explicit authority for requiring affordable housing within a new residential development. Other states have clear authority for that, or clear prohibitions. North Carolina is a bit in a gray area, not having explicit authority. It would seem that there can't be a kind of baseline requirement that all new residential development must include affordable housing. It's called inclusionary zoning, other states allow it or prohibit it, North Carolina doesn't have clear authority for that. That said, conditional zoning is a very flexible tool, and some communities do use conditional zoning and include affordable housing through conditional zoning approvals. Bonafide farm activities, if you're working in the county or in the ETJ area of a municipality, farm activities cannot be subject to local zoning. The county can't tell a farmer when to plow or give a setback on grazing cattle. That's pretty straightforward and easy. What gets more challenging is the broad range of activities that are incidental and related to agriculture, and the broad range of activities that fall into the category of agritourism. That has been a widening scope of land uses over recent years and continues to raise questions for many communities. This is not the full list, there's lots of other land uses that have special protections, but this gives you a sense and a flavor of some of the topics that have to have special consideration in zoning decision-making. With that, we have covered some of the legitimate zoning considerations, the things that the planning board and the governing board absolutely should consider as they're making a rezoning or other legislative development decision, but also those things that are out of bounds, the things that we need to be careful of and avoid as we are making public decisions about how property owners are going to use their property. Some of the things are just not part of the public decision-making process. As you move forward in making your legislative decisions in your communities, keep these in mind, focus on those appropriate and legitimate considerations, steer clear of those improper zoning considerations.
Okay, well, that was it. We do have more modules, again, we might schedule those for upcoming meetings. Those of you that have been on the boards for a while know that we often talk about things in terms of whether it's a legislative decision, a quasi-judicial decision, or something else. So there are some quasi-judicial modules that we could look at, as well as some comprehensive planning type of modules. But thank you again, I hope you did find it beneficial.
Thank you, that was interesting. Okay, so we now have public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to give the general public comment to the board? I see no one stepping up, so we will then move on. Since we deleted 7A, we will move to 7B, recommendation for a vice chair. So I guess we can have discussion about that. Is there anyone that would like to put themselves forward? It would be normal members, not alternates, for the vice chair? Or are we going to draft someone into submission and have them do it?
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that, you were one that I would have probably drafted. Is there anyone else that would be interested? Okay, I see no one else is interested, so in the past, we've done written ballots, I suppose we should still do that?
Yeah, so...
If someone was shy and they would like to nominate someone else, you're still welcome to do so.
Absolutely, are there any other nominations? So just a little bit more background, so all members will vote, and then the recommendation from the board will be sent to town council for their consideration and final decision. So I will pass out the ballots, and then we'll tally the votes.
You can, whoever you would prefer to, you can vote. Chris has stated that she would like to be, you're welcome to vote for her or any other member.
and one vote for Member Donegan. So at this time, we would need to make a motion to send a recommendation to town council.
Do I have a motion to pass this recommendation on to town council?
Yes, I will make a motion to pass this recommendation to town council.
Do we have a second?
Sir.
All right, did you get, after a second? All in favor? All right. Did you vote yes? Okay, the motion is unanimous. Sorry, I just returned, you put your hand down so fast. Okay, thank you very much. We can now move on to the planning newsletter.
So it has been a while since we last met, so have a few more updates for the board than probably usual. In terms of some of the development activity that has been going on, we do have a site and construction plans in for the Duke Energy Substation on Airport Boulevard, a site and construction plan application for a property on WCC Lane, that's just south of Wake Competition Center. Site plan application for 403 Watkins Road, that's in the vicinity of Wake Tech, pretty much just east of that property, for a mixed-use development with 357 multifamily units. Also got in, it's technically an application for a minor modification, but it's a significant one, so we included it. It's a 77,000 square foot addition to the existing building at 401 South Part, and that is part of the Forge Nano Project. So all of those are in and under review. We also did receive a rezoning application for 109 Trans-Air Drive, that's in the Airport Boulevard and McCrimmon area, so that should be making its way to this board here in the near future. In terms of town council approvals, town council did approve the rezoning for 1100 Perimeter Park that the planning board previously reviewed. And they did ultimately vote to deny the rezoning application that came before you for the Hamlet Development. That was the single-family rental development off of Church Street. That applicant has indicated that they will be revising their plans, reducing the number of units, and do plan to still move forward with something by right. So we have not yet received that application, and we have had a pre-submital meeting with them, but we are looking at a similar project, probably more duplexes than single-family, probably dropping 20 or 30 units, but all indications are that they're still planning on moving forward and just going with a by-right development. A couple of things in terms of development that aren't on here. First, very excited to share that the dog park opened this week. So if you do have a furry friend, I hope you could make your way over there, just a great new addition to the town. And then the site plan for Phase 1 of Town Center was approved this week. So that was after your agenda was published, but that is a huge milestone for the town. Having that approval, obviously, the planning board played a critical role in adopting Plan Development Zoning District, then the Plan Development Plan, and going through that whole process and rezoning, review of the development agreement, but we are looking at a groundbreaking now towards the end of September. So just a great, great thing for the town, and really exciting. In terms of other projects, we continue to be extremely busy in the planning department, so I have to give a shout-out to my team, because I just feel like they are doing a ton of great work right now. In the transportation realm, we currently have three significant studies going on. The Safe Streets Study, which is really Central Pines overseeing that, that study has been moving along. So as a reminder, Central Pines is really using Morrisville to develop a safe streets template for kind of suburban communities, and Morrisville's that template. We contributed $13,000, and we're getting, you know, a lot of work out of that in terms of a safety action plan for Morrisville. But that is wrapping up and going to be presented to town council, we believe, at their September 23 meeting. We also continue to work on the alternate transit study for the Smart Shuttle, so just finalizing that right now. Second round of public engagement is just beginning, it's going to occur in September and October, and then we'll be wrapping up the final recommendations for that. And we kicked off the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Update in July. So Kimbley Horn was selected as a consultant to work on that project, and they initiated that project over the summer. Again, just getting ready to start public engagement for that, anticipating a potential November meeting with the PCB and that consultant as part of that public input, kind of one of those first steps in the process. That is a project that we're anticipating will take about 15 months to complete, so that's going to take some time. We're also continuing to make great strides in public art, so if you have been to some of our town events recently, you may have seen Brittany outmanning a table, gathering input on an icon initiative for Morrisville. So we started off with murals, and now we're looking at icons, so like Durham has their bulls, other communities have their icon or their symbol that represents their community. So after a summer of public engagement, that has been narrowed down to three referred by the public, and those are going to be presented to town council here sometime in October. We'll be selecting an icon, and then going through a process with artists for designs and moving that project forward. And then finally, the RFQ for the new rental assistance program was released. We did get four submissions in from different organizations, so those are now currently under review by a selection committee, and we're hoping to have a contract in place for that in the next month or so. So just a lot of exciting stuff going on.
Thank you. So we can move on to board comments. We'll start with the newbie.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say, I'm just so honored and happy to be with all of you. I've lived in Morrisville my whole adult life, down the street off of Morrisville Parkway, I live across from Preston, and I'm very proud to be in Morrisville. I raised my daughter here, and we love it here, we go canoeing at Lake Crabtree all the time, and just a great place to live. I grew up in Cary, so it's not like I went so far away from home. My parents still live in Cary down the street, so pretty uneventful life, I graduated from NC State, but I'm very happy to be here. I have a nonprofit that does a lot of work in the community as for STEAM, like STEM with the arts, and then entrepreneurship and wellness, so that's my cup of tea. But I'm happy to be here and to support any way I can.
Thank you.
Michelle, can you tell us what the three icons are? Is that public knowledge, or...
I'll go ahead and share it, and if I'm going to speak, Elliot, correct me. I believe we are down to a butterfly, a peacock, and a dragonfly. Is that great?
So I think those were the three top votes as of right now, but I'm not sure if we're limiting it to three to council.
Okay. My staff is talking about something else.
A dark horse is coming up.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we'll go to town council for a final decision, but I do believe those are the top three votes, the butterfly, dragonfly, and peacock.
Yeah, thank you.
I haven't been to Park West in a while, did they start construction over there?
No.
They have not, we are still waiting to receive an application, so we don't have their site plan in yet.
Okay, thanks.
That's true.
I do have a question, because I thought of, I think about this every time I drive down Church Street, but as far as the public arts program...
You push the button, sorry. The right button there. The right-hand button, it'll turn red.
Oh gee. Men better keep it off. The concern I have when it comes to the public arts program, when you're driving down Church Street, the underpass for 540, are there any plans to do any kind of art on those walls and to clean up that area, maybe put in, since we're talking butterfly, maybe a butterfly garden or something there, because it really looks bad, and it's not getting any better. So I'm wondering, has there been any discussion about that?
We've talked about those, I think when we've been talking about mirror locations, that one in particular came up. It didn't make the top initially recommended or selected, but I could definitely forward that recommendation on as we're continuing to explore public art and getting further into public art as something that there's interest in.
Okay. I think it would really improve that area of Church Street, and people wouldn't litter and throw things out there if we had some kind of beautification project going there.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. I guess, and welcome to new members, and also thanks to Ken Sack and Rick Bane for their service in the committee, and thank you for the presentations and everything. That is it. So if we don't have any other comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Sir.
All right, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.